City Attorney Eric Bell.
President.
City Manager Tanya Williams.
President.
Well, President and County, at this time we'll go in to close, before we go into closed session, I ask for the City Attorney to give a report on the items that we'll be discussing.
Pretty happy to do that, Mayor. You have four items on your closed session agenda. The first is a public employee performance evaluation, titled "City Attorney." You have a conference with your labor negotiator. You have an item with regard to public employee appointment with regard to the position of fire chief. And you have a conference with your real property negotiators with regard to the properties specified on the agenda. That's it. There are no members of the public present.
Thank you. Seeing that there's no one in the public, is there anyone from the public that would like to say anything? Since there's no one present, this time I ask for a vote to go into closed session.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Carla Perez.
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Ed Scott. That's the one I heard first. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, we'll move into closed session.
Overseen by Rialto Police Personnel, the 10-week program offers treatment, prevention, and disciplinary components to alter negative behavior. We then work to identify family problems that have occurred as a result of juvenile delinquency. Truancy problems, incorrigibility, minor law violations, and leadership development are all great candidates for the program. Each Pride Platoon class starts with a weekend camping trip. Students will spend each day participating in various activities to learn the value of teamwork, problem-solving, physical fitness, and discipline. Students spend every month...
The earthquakes you see in movies are one thing, but real life is a completely different animal. Just because you can't predict an earthquake doesn't mean that you can't prepare for one. In the event of a real earthquake, you should drop, cover, and hold on. Visit ready.gov/earthquake and practice what to do to keep you and your family safe in the event of a real earthquake. And you'll be seen as a hero by the family and your loved ones.
When the earth shakes, the ground moves, and things start to fall, you'll ask yourself, how prepared or unprepared are you? Have you removed objects? When the earth shakes, the ground moves, and things start to fall, you'll ask yourself, how prepared or unprepared are you? Have you removed objects from over the bed and over your head? Anchored your possessions securely to the wall. It won't be a pain, and you're not doing it in vain. Are your emergency kits packed? What about your family, your friends? Do they know what to do, how to get in touch, and where to meet? Do you know how to drop, cover, and hold on, covering your head and neck? What if you're outside? Or in a car? After the shaking stops, look around. Figure out what to do. Stay away from damaged areas. Turn on a radio. Reach out for help. And if you're trapped, do not move about. Stay calm, only shout as a last resort. Once everything and everyone is safe, get prepared. An aftershock could be on its way. So before the earth shakes, the ground moves, and things start to fall, get prepared. Make a plan. Practice what you know, because an earthquake can happen anytime, anywhere. You never know.
Too hot outside? Need a place to cool down? Pay a visit to your local cooling center. The City of Rialto has three locations available for when temperatures reach 100 degrees Fahrenheit, or heat advisories are in effect. The Grace Vargas Senior Center is located at 1411 South Riverside Avenue. Relax in a spacious lounge area with comfortable seating while staying out of the heat. The Rialto Branch Library is located at 251 West First Street. Pass the time reading a book or browsing through the internet while enjoying the library's air conditioning. Just a block over from the library, the Carl Johnson Center. Located at 214 North Palm Avenue provides you with the chance to stay cool but still active with its indoor basketball courts. Break the good kind of sweat here. For cooling center hours, check in with a location you planned to visit ahead of time. Stay cool during the heat waves, Rialto.
Hey, Rialto. My name is Maria from the City of Rialto's Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department, and I'm excited to share some awesome news with you. We're thrilled to announce the completion of the resurfacing project at Rialto City Park, reinforcing our city council's commitment to maintaining high-quality public spaces that meet the needs of our families. As a family-first community, we believe that well-maintained, safe, and accessible parks foster a stronger sense of togetherness and community pride. So, what's new? First, check out these bold, vibrant colors. Not only do they look amazing, but they're designed for better visibility and to bring energy and enthusiasm. These colors reflect our city's identity and our dedication to providing top-tier recreation amenities. Plus, we've introduced Rialto's first-ever pickleball courts. As part of the project, one of the tennis courts has been converted into four designated pickleball courts, giving our residents a fun new way to stay active. There's still more. We added our City of Rialto's Parks and Rec logo to the basketball courts and extended the fence between the pickleball and tennis courts to enhance the experience of our players. Interested in playing on the pickleball and tennis courts? Visit the Rialto Fitness and Aquatic Center for access. The basketball court is open for public use, so come in and shoot some hoops. We know that recreation plays a vital role in building a healthy and active community. That's why we continue to work towards keeping our parks, recreational facilities, and gathering places to a high standard that enhances the quality of life for our residents. This project was made possible by funding through department funds and the California Prop 68 per capita grant program. At the City of Rialto, we take pride in shaping a thriving and innovative recreational landscape, ensuring that our city keeps pace with growth while maintaining high standards our council desires and our residents deserve. We are committed to the future of Rialto, where families thrive, public spaces inspire, and recreation brings people together. We can't wait to see you at the courts.
What do you think about the new courts?
Awesome. Love the fiberglass backboard. And I was here the other day when they were painting it. So, yeah. But I gotta come with my son and shoot some hoop.
It's impressive. You know, they did a great job with them. And the colors, I love the colors.
They're so vibrant and welcoming. It's like you just wanna come and buy a new basketball. I love them.
Gets your attention right away, and it's very nice to see that the city's actually doing something for the park. It's a really nice upgrade.
I like how you can raise a court, you can make it higher, I mean lower and higher for the littler kids. I like everything about it. I like the environment. I like how it's gated up for the kids. I like it. Shout out to Rialto. Y'all doing y'all big one.
I think about the courts is fire and thank you for our community.
Nice.
I think about the court is that I love it so much. This is every hoopla's dream and thank God for everything.
Nice. What do you think? You like them? Yeah, you fire? Alright, you guys wanna shoot? Yeah, go, go, go.
I'm gonna shoot the half court.
Hi, guys. Welcome back to our show? What are we calling this? Vendor shout-outs, farmer's market? Whatever the case is, if you have any suggestions, leave a comment down below. But, we're here at the Rialto Certified Farmer's Market, and today we will be talking to one of our vendors who is Happy Hog Farms. They have been here with us for a very long time at the farmer's market, so let's go check them out. Alright, guys, we are here in front of Happy Hog Farms booth. Alright, let's get started. Are you ready? So, can you tell me a little bit about your business?
Uh, we're local. We're in downtown Riverside, so we try to come out and try to support people for access to like fresh fruit, organic. A lot of stuff that we sell right here is we grow, whether it's sugar canes, avocados, lime. And then the juice machine, that's oranges from Riverside County. Everything is local.
Do you have any bestsellers or anything that customers love?
The guacamole, that's the best seller. My brother makes it. But, little bit of tomato, little bit of lime, and there's a lot of guacamole, there's a lot of chunks of avocado, so it's really, really good. That's our best seller, and the tamales. Everything is freshly made, and they're Mexican tamales. People ask, are they, what kind are they? Because some people use banana leaves, we use corn leaves. We have beef, pork, chicken, and cheese for the people that don't eat meat. And then we sell ceviche, fish, shrimp, vegan.
Alright, do you have any fun or interesting facts about the business?
Well, what people don't really know that we're only allowed to use local. So when we, like, when we press the juice, we're only allowed... So when we, like, when we press the juice, we're only allowed what's in season. You know, so sometimes it's not as sweet as it was because we'll, once we run out of the navel, we'll start the Valencia and it'll have to like, it'll get sweeter as the weeks go by. So people don't know that, so they'll think like, why aren't you just getting the sweetness that is on right now? But, we don't get our stuff from like the markets or the commercial. It's all locally farmed.
Alright, well thank you so much for joining us today. I appreciate it. Alright guys, well that was Happy Hog Farms. We will see you guys next time. Bye!
The City of Rialto's upgraded permitting center is a seamless, user-friendly experience for permit applications, business license requests, and secure online payments. Designed for efficiency, transparency, and convenience, this platform is built to service residents, contractors, and city staff alike. Everything you need, all in one place. Check out this introduction video to the new online permit center coming June 2nd.
Welcome to Civic Access, the online customer access portal for the City of Rialto. This introduction will navigate you through the various online services and functions offered by the City of Rialto. As a guest visiting the site, you will be able to pay invoices, search for records, and view scheduled inspections. If you are a registered user, you will have access to see more information about your applications and records, and even apply for certain development applications. To log in, click "Log In" or "Register" in the top right corner of the page, or with the tile in the center of the screen. If you have not registered for Civic Access, please create an account prior to logging in. After successfully logging in, you will see additional tabs and functionality. The first tab is the homepage. This will bring you back to the main page again from wherever you are in the website. The next tab is the "Apply" tab. This is where you can apply for available online permit, plan, and business license applications. After clicking "Apply," you will be automatically redirected to the city's decision engine, which is a guided application to help you find the correct permit, plan, or business license application to apply for. The next tab is the dashboard. In the dashboard, you will be able to see the progress of your permit and plan applications that you submitted to the city. You will also be able to view all of your inspections and their associated statuses. Your dashboard will also show your open invoices. You can make payments by adding them to your cart and making a payment with a credit card. If you have business licenses with the city, they will be listed at the bottom of the dashboard screen. My work is another way to see all of your associated records in a list view. It is sectioned out into permits or plans, inspections, and invoices. If you applied for a permit or plan at City Hall, you should see the record in this screen. If you have difficulty finding a particular record, you are able to filter and sort your records. There is even an option to export your records into a Microsoft Excel file. Providing the correct email address and contact information on your application is essential to being able to see your records in the online portal. Please contact the city if you are not seeing your applications in the online portal. If you want to see scheduled inspections, click on the "Today's Inspections" tab. If you would like to see upcoming scheduled inspections or past scheduled inspections, simply change your desired date. The "Search Records" tab allows you to search and view information available for permit, plan, licenses, and inspections records. You can search with record numbers, keywords, or partial descriptions. Click on the record number to see more details of the record. If you cannot locate the record you are looking for, please contact the city. The last tab is the "Help" tab, which is where you most likely found this video. Along with this introduction video, there will be other instruction videos and help guides available to you. If you need additional assistance, please contact the city. Now that we have gone over all of the menu options, let's quickly go over the six tiles that you see on the homepage. These offer you another way to quickly navigate the most frequently visited menu areas of Civic Access. This has been your introduction to Civic Access, the one-stop shop for development and permit application needs. If you need any additional assistance or information with Civic Access, please contact the city. Thanks for watching.
19 emergency has hit working families hardest. That's why, all across the country, community action agencies are open, and here to ensure the well-being of every American family. For over 50 years, we've been delivering hope and opportunity. Now more than ever, working families need life-changing services, solutions, and stability. Contact your local community action agency today.
Have you removed objects from over the bed and over your head? Anchored your possessions securely to the wall. It won't be a pain, and you're not doing it in vain. Are your emergency kits packed? What about your family, your friends? Do they know what to do, how to get in touch, and where to meet? Do you know how to drop, cover, and hold on, covering your head and neck? What if you're outside? Or in a car? After the shaking stops, look around. Figure out what to do. Stay away from damaged areas. Turn on a radio. Reach out for help. And if you're trapped, do not move about. Stay calm, only shout as a last resort. Once everything and everyone is safe, get prepared. An aftershock could be on its way. So before the earth shakes, the ground moves, and things start to fall, get prepared. Make a plan, practice what you know, because an earthquake can happen anytime, anywhere. You never know.
Too hot outside? Need a place to cool down? Pay a visit to your local cooling center. The city of Rialto has three locations available for when temperatures reach 100 degrees Fahrenheit, or heat advisories are in effect. The Grace Vargas Senior Center is located at 1411 South Riverside Avenue. Relax in a spacious lounge area with comfortable seating while staying out of the heat. The Rialto Branch Library is located at 251 West First Street. Pass the time reading a book or browsing through the internet while enjoying the library's air conditioning. Just a block over from the library, the Carl Johnson Center. Located at 214 North Palm Avenue provides you with the chance to stay cool but still active with its indoor basketball courts. Break the good kind of sweat here. For cooling center hours, check in with a location you plan to visit ahead of time. Stay cool during the heat waves, Rialto.
Being a prostate cancer survivor can make a man feel all alone in the fight. Especially in the inland empire. I should know. I am a six-year prostate cancer survivor. That is why we started the Walnut Tribe Support Group. A nonprofit support group for prostate cancer survivors and their families. Where they can get help, support, and information to guide them through it all. Now, in partnership with the Pink Ribbon Place in Riverside, and the Greater Faith Bible Church in Rialto, we will have our in-person and Zoom meetings at two locations, both beginning at 6:00 PM. The Riverside meetings will be held on the first Wednesday of every month, and our Rialto meetings will be held on the third Tuesday of every month. If you have been diagnosed with prostate cancer, or know someone who has, feel free to join us in the fight. These meetings will be free and open to the public.
Want to give your garden a boost while helping the planet? The city of Rialto has you covered. Rialto residents and businesses can pick up free mulch and compost, open to the public 24 hours a day. Located at 246 South Willow Avenue, in the south parking lot. Bring your shovel and container to this self-serve station and do your part to keep Rialto green. It's first come, first served. Transform your yard and support sustainability at the same time. For more information, call 909-820-2602. Or visit www.rialtocav.gov. Proudly brought to you by the City of Rialto Public Works Department. And let's grow greener together.
The earthquakes you see in movies are one thing, but real life is a completely different animal. Just because you can't predict an earthquake doesn't mean that you can't prepare for one. In the event of a real earthquake, you should drop, cover, and hold on. Visit ready.gov/earthquake and practice what to do to keep you and your family safe in the event of a real earthquake. And you'll be seen as a hero by the family and your loved ones.
When the earth shakes, the ground moves, and things start to fall, you'll ask yourself, how prepared or unprepared are you? Have you removed objects... When the earth shakes, the ground moves, and things start to fall, you'll ask yourself, how prepared or unprepared are you? Have you removed objects from over the bed and over your head? Angered your possessions securely to the wall? It won't be a pain, and you're not doing it in vain. Are your emergency kits packed? What about your family, your friends? Do they know what to do, how to get in touch, and where to meet? Do you know how to drop, cover, and hold on, covering your head and neck? What if you're outside or in a car? After the shaking stops, look around, figure out what to do. Stay away from damaged areas. Turn on a radio. Reach out for help. And if you're trapped, do not move about. Stay calm, only shout as a last resort. Once everything and everyone is safe, get prepared. An aftershock could be on its way. So before the earth shakes, the ground moves, and things start to fall, get prepared, make a plan, practice what you know, because an earthquake can happen anytime, anywhere. You never know.
Too hot outside? Need a place to cool down? Pay a visit to your local cooling center. The city of Rialto has three locations available for when temperatures reach 100 degrees Fahrenheit, or heat advisories are in effect. The Grace Vargas Senior Center is located at 1411 South Riverside Avenue. Relax in a spacious lounge area with comfortable seating while staying out of the heat. The Rialto Branch Library is located at 251 West First Street. Pass the time reading a book or browsing through the internet while enjoying the library's air conditioning. Just a block over from the library, the Carl Johnson Center, located at 214 North Palm Avenue provides you with the chance to stay cool but still active with its indoor basketball courts. Break the good kind of sweat here. For cooling center hours, check in with a location you plan to visit ahead of time. Stay cool during the heat waves, Rialto.
Hey guys, it's Maria, the Healthy Rialto Coordinator. And today, we are back with the vendor shout-outs, and we are shouting out Faby's Bees. Today, we are here with...
Fabyola Delgado.
So today's interview is going to be in Spanish, but don't worry, for all of our non-Spanish speakers, we will be adding subtitles. So, without further ado, let's begin. ¿Cómo está?
Muy bien, gracias.
Okay, so, la primera pregunta sería, ¿qué nos puede contar de su negocio?
Que lo empezamos un poco más de dos años. Nada más, mi esposo y yo hemos trabajado en las abejas, con las abejas. Y hasta ahorita hemos seguido trabajando. Y pensamos seguir trabajando hasta que podamos.
Okay, ¿qué tipo de miel vende aquí?
Vendemos miel de flores de alfalfa, de flores silvestres, y de flores de naranjo. Toda la miel es 100% pura, no tiene sabores, no tiene colores agregados. Si digo de flores de naranjo, es porque ponemos las abejas en los cultivos de naranjos, de ahí agarran el néctar para hacer la miel. Lo mismo de flores silvestres, están las abejas a lo largo del río y en las montañas. Que es todo lo que nace silvestre, es de flores silvestres. La de flores de alfalfa igualmente, son cultivos enormes. Cada cultivo de 60, 80 acres, pura alfalfa. Y es de donde ellas agarran el néctar para hacer la miel. Por eso puedo diferenciar qué clase de miel es cada una.
Wow.
Sí, nosotros trabajamos directamente con las abejas para hacer todo el proceso desde extractar la miel, quitar la miel de las colmenas, extractarla, y embasar la miel.
Oh wow. Aquí también miro en la mesa que tiene diferentes cosas...
Diferentes productos.
...productos que sean aparte de la miel. ¿Qué ofrece también?
Honeycomb, el pollen, la cera, y la crema y los chapsticks, que están hechos a base de la cera de nuestras abejas.
Entonces, todo de aquí es de las abejas con las que ustedes trabajan?
Sí, es de las abejas con las que trabajamos de todos.
¿Tiene productos que se venden más o algo que la gente busca?
A veces se vende la de flores de naranjo, otras veces otra, pero siempre, unas veces es una, otras veces es otra miel. Pero siempre la miel la buscan mucho.
Depende de la temporada?
Sí, también depende mucho de la temporada. La temporada de fríos es cuando más se consume.
Para la gripa y todo eso, ¿verdad?
Sí, para todos, los resfriados consumen mucha miel.
Qué bueno. Okay, ¿tiene algo interesante que nos puede contar del negocio?
¿Qué le podría contar? Que... yo fui la de la idea. Siempre le estuve insistiendo a mi esposo en que compráramos abejas, y él no quería. No quería, decía que hasta que hubiera un buen año, algo así. Yo nunca vamos a saber si va a ser un bueno o malo año, necesitamos tratar. Y yo tenía algo de dinero ahorrado, y con eso fue lo que empezamos. Decimos, vamos a tratar. Si se pierde, bueno, se perdió, pero vamos a tratar de hacer el negocio. Y de ese modo nos hicimos el negocio, porque yo estaba insistiendo. Y todo esto porque tengo un hermano que es cuatro años mayor que yo, y él ya tiene probablemente más de 40 años haciendo esto. Entonces, y luego otro hermano ya tenía como 12 o 15 años también trabajando con abejas. Luego seguimos nosotros, y yo le insistía a él, vamos haciendo abejas, y vamos comprando abejas, y tratando, vamos a tratar. Y después de nosotros, hace como tres o cuatro años empezó otro hermano también con abejas. Desde que va yendo la familia.
La familia, sí, ¿verdad? ¿Y cómo pueden encontrarlos, a ustedes, a las personas que estén interesadas en comprar, afuera de aquí de el mercado?
En Instagram, estamos en Rancho Cocamunga, en Terravista. Ahí también vendemos, y en las montañas, en Crestline, Twin Peaks, y Running Springs. Estamos en esas tres marquetas también.
Okay, ¿y qué es su Instagram?
Faby's Bees.
Faby's Bees. ¿Y tiene como un tipo de suscripción o diferentes descuentos para la gente que viene y compra más de un frasco de miel?
Sí, cuando es más poquita el monto de la miel o la cantidad de miel, es un poco más cara. Pero conforme va creciendo, el volumen de miel es menos. Por ejemplo, una libra cuesta 14 dólares. Tres libras son 30, cuando deberían de ser 42 dólares. Entonces, un galón trae 12 libras, y son nada más 95 dólares. Cuando 12 libras deberían de ser como 160 o más, no estoy segura, pero es bastante caro por libra. Pero ya en un galón es mucho más barato ahora. Una cubeta trae cinco galones. Si fueran por galón serían casi los 500 dólares, pero son solamente 280 por una cubeta. Entonces, entre más volumen compren de miel, es más barata.
Qué bueno. Pues muchas gracias por su tiempo. Aquí estuvimos con Faby's Bees. And we will see you guys next week. Bye.
Bye.
City Council, City of Rialto Acting Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, the Rialto Utilities Authority, the Rialto Housing Authority will come to order. Clerk, would you please call the row?
Mayor Baca.
Present.
Mayor Potem Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Perez.
Present.
Councilmember Montoya.
Present.
Councilmember Caricelas.
Present.
City Treasurer Correa. City Attorney Eric Vell.
Present.
City Manager Tanya Lee.
Present.
Okay, at this time we'll all stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Councilmember Carla Perez.
Please place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would remain standing, this time we'll have the invocation. The invocation will be led by Elder Darlene Nolan with the World Action Christian Center.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we come humbly before you today with thanksgiving and a grateful heart, Lord, touching each and every person under the sound of my voice, Lord, give them wisdom and knowledge to govern this meeting in the name of Jesus, we pray, thank God and amen.
Amen, thank you. At this time we'll have the city attorney report on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor, there were four items on your closed session agenda for this evening, the first was a performance evaluation with the city attorney. Council gave direction to the city attorney with regard to that item. On item two, you had a conference with your labor negotiator, you gave direction to your risk manager and labor negotiators with regard to that, there was no reportable action on that item. You had a public employee appointment item, you gave direction to the city manager with regard to that item. And then finally, you had a conference with your real property negotiator with regard to the parcels listed in the agenda, you gave direction to the city manager with regard to that item, there was no other reportable action, thank you.
Thank you very much. This time now we'll move into presentations and proclamation. Our first one is by a health update by John Chapman.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem and City Council members. My name is Brenda Newo Guterres, I'm representing San Antonio Regional Hospital. Unfortunately, John Chapman, our CEO, couldn't make it today, he had an unexpected conflict, so I'm here to replace him. I'm really excited to be here today because I'm not only here representing the hospital, but also as a resident of the city of Rialto. So this is really exciting for me to be here and talk about not only the great things San Antonio Regional Hospital does, but what it can do if we essentially can expand and move into the city of Rialto. So starting off, we want to give a little bit of updates on what's happening with the hospital industry lately. So it's not great news, but when it comes to financials at hospitals these days, not only from what we've seen recently from the federal government, but also what we've seen in the past few years. A general overview of the hospitals, forty-nine percent of hospitals in California are in the red. If we take a look at the left-hand side chart, the blue one, our payer Medi-Cal Medicaid has only given us a five-point-two increase, well, when compared to our inflation rate, we are at a twelve-point-four. So it's only become worse and worse in the years of twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. So how are hospitals coping with this? Well, hospitals are closing, we've seen closures all over Southern California or California in general, and they've reduced some of their services. So if this keeps going, it's going to affect all of us, not only in the hospital industry, but also to our patients and access they can receive. So when it comes to drug costs, there is shortages in drug prices as well as drugs in general, so the... When you come to the hospital, they have increased to about thirteen to fifteen percent, I won't spend too long on this just for sake of time. So when it comes to nursing and allied health, I want to take a look at that third bullet point there. So it says US nursing schools turned away over sixty-five thousand qualified applicants in twenty twenty-three due to an insufficient number of clinical sites, faculty and clinical preceptors as well as budget constraints. So what this means is after students graduate nursing school, they need hospitals like San Antonio to do their new graduate training. This training typically takes three to six months and it's something that's San Antonio is doing, we're actually training over one hundred and twenty to one hundred and fifty nurses a year, something we're very proud of, but it's something that is very defeating when there's hospitals who are losing on money and cannot invest into training these nurses and more importantly, cannot keep up to the workforce development that we want here in the inland empire. So physician shortage, I want to go ahead and take a look at the second to last row where it says Los Angeles, Orange County and Inland Empire. So we have a shortage of about thirteen percent of physicians. And if you take a look at the inland empire and exclude Los Angeles and Orange County, that goes up to about over thirty percent. So I want to tell you a little bit about what San Antonio is doing to address those gaps. And these physician shortages are really, really important as many of you can probably relate is, you know, you call your primary care provider and you can't get an appointment until about a month to two months out. So where is everybody going when they need their healthcare services? They're going to the EDs or the urgent cares. So also, when it comes to behavioral health, we're seeing also a shortage of psychologists, psychiatrists. So this is really important too, so I promise I'll get to positives, I'm getting the negatives all the way first. So here's some of the demographics of patients in our zip code, so I did compare nine-two-three-seven-six to nine-two-three-seven-seven, here's nine-two-three-seven-six. I won't go too deep into it just for sake of time, but we do have the majority of the population here or the race in the city is Hispanic and the age range we're looking, the age range we're looking about thirty-five to sixty-five years and sixty-five and older, so our senior population is exponentially growing here in the city of Rialto. Pretty similar in nine-two-three-seven-seven. And then I did want to point out a few of the clinical diagnosis from patients we've seen that reside in the city of Rialto that have seen, gone and had some of our services at San Antonio. So some of the top combined clinical diagnosis that we've seen is hypertension, diabetes, those are the two top ones. Then when we go to mental and behavioral health, we are seeing an increase in tobacco-related disorders, anxiety and fear and depression. Okay, so I promised I was going to get to the positives. So here's some of the gaps that San Antonio is doing or trying to fill into the gaps. So how are we closing the gap for physicians? We talked about how there's a thirteen percent of physician shortage in the inland empire. So San Antonio just started a new residency program, it actually started in July first, so in the, this is the first time in the history of San Antonio that we've had a residency program and it's going to be for internal medicine and family practice. We will be graduating twenty physicians a year and aim to hire them in our clinics. So currently we do have four Care4U clinics, that is in Upland, Ontario and Fontana, and we aim to have thirteen or fif- thirteen to fifteen in the next eighteen to twenty-four months. So yes, Rialto is on, one of the ones that we are taking a look at to potentially have one of these Care4U clinics here. So our clinical shadowing program is also contributing to our workforce development model that we're having. So we want to bridge the gap not only for physicians and nurses, but also way before that when students are in high school. So we have this great program, clinical shadowing program, which is open to all students in, all high school students in San Bernardino County. So students are able to shadow surgeries, are able to shadow just the doctors and the nurses around. So here are some of the departments that they're able to shadow, but they're able to see open-heart surgeries, they're able to see ortho cases where they're seeing hips being replaced, knees being replaced, and we've had a really, really great outcome. This is our second year that we've had this program and we hope to continue to expand and hopefully have some of our Rialto Unified School District students in here. So we also are expanding our behavioral health urgent care, so we're embedding behavioral health into our clinics, so we are opening one soon in Ontario. And so not only will you be able to see your primary care provider, but if you have an issue with, you know, anxiety, depression, which are some of the high ones that we had seen, you'll be able to have a handoff to the behavioral health specialists. I think it's changing on here but not up there. Oh, there we go, there we go. Okay. So we've been seeing also a loss of maternity units, so when hospitals are in the red like we saw, the first thing that they close is either pediatrics or maternity because these units at best, they break even. So we did recently, there, a hospital in the nearby area that has announced a closure is Moncler Medical Center. They have announced the closure earlier this year of their maternity unit. So what is San Antonio doing to bridge this gap? We're building a new maternity unit. So here's our floor plan for the new maternity unit that we aim to have in the next two to three years. This is huge because as we have hospitals in our neighboring area that are closing their maternity units, we're planning on opening a new one and expanding it. So hopefully this can contribute to the low birth rates. So we talked a little bit about early stages of life, now we want to talk a little bit about senior care concerns. I showed you a little bit of the data that we have seen a growing amount of the senior population. And if you look here on the second bar graph, the inland empire has the most, has seen the largest senior growing population in all of California. So what are we doing here as well? Well, we're opening up the Center of Aging. So what the Center of Aging is, is it's going to be a one-stop shop for seniors. This building is located in Rancho, maybe many of you have seen it, it's located on Foothill and Haven, it used to be the old Mercury Building that was there and now it's going to be our Center of Aging. So anyone who's a caregiver or has cared for a loved one or a senior knows how many appointments it takes to go and get your primary care services. Typically takes about five to eight if you see different specialists, plus a hefty amount of money when you have to provide transportation, especially if they're wheelchair-bound. So with the Center of Aging, we will be providing transport within a twenty-mile radius, so Rialto will be one of those cities that will be able to benefit off this transport. We'll have seven different family practitioner medical groups, we'll have a geriatric clinic, we'll have specialists that are senior care-oriented, we'll have geriatrics, podiatry, urology, cardiology, ophthalmology. And on the other side of the building, we'll also have other services such as lab, MRI, imaging, pharmacy, audiology, patient fall center and occupational therapy. We'll also have a large visual podcast studio where we can sit up to eighty patients. Here we'll have plans of hosting community lectures and broadcasting live podcasts about senior care. So we are still planning on filling some of the building. A quarter of the building is potentially, we're potentially in talks to have a dementia or behavioral health for seniors in this building. So lots of great things to come within San Antonio and we really wanted to come out here just to provide updates on current issues in healthcare and also see how we can expand essentially into the city of Rialto. I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions by any members other than, I'd like to just make a comment where I know that the Mayor Potem and myself have met with and the city manager was with San Antonio and the hospital and they showed an interest in coming to the city of Rialto and providing urgent care or possibility a hospital in the area. So we're very glad that you have the interest and that you're serving our constituents from the city of Rialto and that we're glad that you're from Rialto and a graduate from here too as well, Brenda, so with that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Not, thank you very much, Brenda.
Thank you.
Next we have from Measure I presentation by Otis Greer, who is the Deputy Executive Director for SBCTA.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name's Otis Greer with the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority. And tonight I'd just like to take a few moments to provide a brief overview as well as a reminder of the role that Measure I has played specifically with transportation projects here in the city of Rialto as well as throughout the county. Just for a quick reminder of history, our agency was initially established as a council of governments in nineteen seventy-three and was responsible for planning transportation projects in the twenty-four cities, towns and the five supervisory districts with representation from every jurisdiction. Mayor Baca happens to be the representative to SBCTA on behalf of the city of Rialto. In twenty sixteen, all of our individual functions, which included a transportation commission, freeway emergency services, congestion management and transportation authority were consolidated into a single statutory entity that we all know now as SBCTA. Among the primary duties of SBCTA, it serves as the administrator of Measure I funds, which is a critical component to the planning and delivery of transportation projects throughout the county. And if you'll indulge me just for a moment, I'd like to play a brief video for you to show you just a little bit about Measure I. Uh, and if you'll indulge me just for a moment, I'd like to play a a brief video for you to show you just a little bit about Measure I. Oh, I think I went too far.
San Bernardino County is on the move, and it's thanks in large part to Measure I. First approved by voters in nineteen eighty-nine and again in two thousand and four, Measure I is a half-cent sales tax dedicated to improving transportation across the county. And over the years, it's delivered real results. From extending the SR two-ten freeway from LA County into Redlands to easing congestion and cutting commute times, Measure I has made travel safer, more convenient, and faster for everyone. In our cities and neighborhoods, Measure I dollars have improved traffic signals, upgraded interchanges like SR sixty and Central Avenue in Chino, and repaved local roads like Miss Wally Road in Victorville, keeping local streets running smoothly. For public transit riders, Measure I brought the introduction of MetroLink to San Bernardino County, expanded bus routes, the introduction of zero-emission bus and train options, and more accessible transit, connecting more people to jobs, schools, and healthcare. And it doesn't stop there. Measure I also supports bike lanes, pedestrian safety, and planning for future mobility, all while boosting our local economy by creating jobs and supporting construction projects across the region. What's another great thing about Measure I? It's locally controlled. That means San Bernardino County and city leaders decide how funds are spent rather than being directed by outside agencies. Because of Measure I, transportation in San Bernardino County isn't just keeping up, it's moving forward. Moving forward together with Measure I.
And as the video pointed out, Measure I is a county-wide half-cent sales tax. It was initially approved by the voters in nineteen eighty-nine, and it funded projects through two thousand and ten. It was very successful, and in two thousand and four, SBCTA went back to the voters to request an extension of that half-cent sales tax through two thousand and forty, and that's the measure that we're currently operating under. Since two thousand and ten, Measure I has raised more than two-point-five billion dollars in transportation projects. It's contributed to more than seven-hundred million dollars in local streets, roads, sidewalks. That includes potholes, repairs, traffic signals, and when combined with state and federal funds, uh that number goes up to about two-point-nine billion in regional projects and more significantly represents about thirty-two thousand jobs that have been brought to the region. Now, these figures don't include the the contributions that Measure I have made to some of our transit operators like MetroLink and OmniTrans, as well as some of our senior specialized transit services throughout the county. Uh, Measure I has contributed to a host of significant projects in the region, including the extension of the two-ten freeway. It includes the MetroLink services, it includes uh a lot of street widenings. And you can see some of the work that's been done here regionally listed on this chart here, as well as projects specific to the city of Rialto, Interstate ten, two-ten Pepper, Cedar Interchange, Pepper Avenue Extension, uh and a host of other projects. I've provided counsel with a a fact sheet that includes many of the projects, not only that have been completed with the use of Measure I funding, but those projects that have been identified by city staff as potential projects that a future measure may be looking uh to advance. Now, one of the key components of Measure I that was passed by the voters is that it includes a host of taxpayer protections. Among those is the individual, the Independent Taxpayer Oversight Committee, which provides a citizen overview to make sure that the funds are spent correctly and in accordance with the measure's intent. There's a cap of one percent on administrative fees associated with Measure I. So there is not a lot of overhead associated. And in fact, we are a staff of about eighty-five staff running a budget of about one-point-two billion dollars. So we're relatively lean uh as a as an organization. And it is regionally an appropriate program that returns to source dollars that are generated within each of those respective subareas. Uh, and I think we're pretty proud of the track record we've had delivering projects uh that have been effective to the citizens around the country, around the around the county. So we would like to request, uh in addition to sharing this information with you, your residents' feedback on Measure I and what they've seen and what our plan is potentially for the future. And we have our website listed here, and we'd like to invite your residents to review our documentation. Take a look at what Measure I has accomplished both in the past and some of the thoughts we may have for moving into the future with transportation. And we'd like to get their feedback on how we can advance better projects here in the city of Rialto and throughout the county. Uh, Mayor, that concludes my comments, and I'll be happy to take any questions if you have.
Are there any questions by any members of the council? Hearing none, I I hope that the listeners are listening and they give their input in reference to Measure I. And I hope that uh, I'll convey a message that uh for some of our concern right now, as we see the city of Rialto growing in population and traffic congestion, that they consider in the future uh the widening of Riverside Bridge uh going over on that area because that's a concern for us in the future as well. So hopefully, we can put that in the radar, that they can start looking at the possibility of funding that sometime in the future as well.
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate you coming, Otis, and giving us an update in reference to Measure I and what it's doing in our city, in our county as well, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have the Pride Platoon uh program. Captain Nelson will give the report.
This will be about a twelve-minute presentation. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Tonight, the police department's excited to announce the registration's now open for the twentieth session of our Rialto Police Department Pride Platoon Leadership Program. And before I play a video, I'd like to give you a quick history about how the program came to be. In two thousand and ten, we saw a rise in juvenile crime. And I'll never forget Chief Kling calling a few of us into his office, and he challenged us. He challenged us to to be more creative, to be innovative, and find a longer-lasting solution to the problem. And through that meeting, the Pride Platoon was born. And since then, we've been able to service over seven-hundred-and-fifty students. Juvenile arrests have gone down forty-five percent. Runaway juveniles have gone down forty percent. And we've been able to create a comprehensive curriculum that collaborates with community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, and all types of city departments. I just wanna play the video for you guys. You guys can get an in-depth look into what the program's all about.
But I will tell you one thing, success does not come without sacrifice.
The Pride Platoon program is a leadership program specifically designed to deal with at-risk youth. The primary goal is to provide support to adolescents in high school who require guidance, positive influences, and assistance in redirecting their lives. Overseen by Rialto police personnel, the ten-week program offers treatment, prevention, and disciplinary components to alter negative behavior. We then work to identify family problems that have occurred as a result of juvenile delinquency. Truancy problems, incorrigibility, minor law violations, and leadership development are all great candidates for the program. Each Pride Platoon class starts with a weekend camping trip. Students will spend each day participating in various activities to learn the value of teamwork, problem-solving, physical fitness, and discipline. Students spend every moment with Pride Platoon mentors who will guide them throughout the weekend, including every meal, physical training, the basics of military drill, and several talking sessions. Your young men and women will work together throughout the day but remain separated at night, with staff members remaining on duty each night to ensure a problem-free weekend. Students will hear real stories from staff members who experienced problems during their own youth and how they managed to overcome them. At the end of the camping weekend, staff and students will return to the Rialto Police Station to spend a well-earned day off with their family.
Really think about what I say. Discipline equals freedom.
Following the first weekend, students will meet every Saturday morning for a physical fitness routine led by our mentors. Afterwards, students will participate in various classes and trainings designed specifically to benefit them by providing insight into the issues that directly affect them. Students are taught by members of our police department, attorneys from the San Bernardino County District Attorney's Office, social media personalities, motivational speakers, and even incarcerated criminals who give a raw, unfiltered look into their life as an inmate. During the entire program, students will take several field trips, some designed to show them the consequences of their actions, allowing them to see the reality of the dangers of drunk driving, the life inside of a jail, or worse, the county coroner's office. Other trips provide a foundation of knowledge such as participating in city events, seeing local landmarks, touring college campuses, and learning basic skills such as CPR and basic car maintenance. The Pride Platoon program is a collaborative effort between law enforcement, community-based organizations, each individual student and their families. Experienced Rialto police officers coordinate the program with a number of volunteers who donate their time and expertise to assist with the program's ongoing success. Pride Platoon's success or failure depends directly on the commitment and dedication of every person involved. By the end of the program, each student will have received the tools needed for success and with the support of their family, will be well on their way to becoming positive members of society and role models within the Rialto community.
So you've heard the numbers, you've watched the video, but I think it's important you hear some real-life success stories. So first, I'd like to call up Rialto Police Sergeant, Explorer Sergeant, Juan Ibarra.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Explorer Sergeant Ibarra with the Rialto Police Department. And I'd like to welcome each and every one of you for coming here today. About three years ago, I was a sophomore in high school, and to say the least, I wasn't the sharpest tool in the shed. I was hanging out with people I shouldn't have been hanging out with and doing things I definitely shouldn't have been doing. But worst of all, I had a certain mindset. I didn't care. I felt like the world hated me, so I hated the world back. Growing up, I would say I didn't have it easy. My father, he was deported when I was three, and my mom trying to make enough money to pay the bills was at work most of her time. I used to use these things that happened to me when I was a kid as an excuse to make poor choices and throw my life away. I was wrong to be thinking like this, and it wasn't until the beginning of Pride Platoon on our camping trip that I realized this. Captain Nelson had given a speech on how he grew up and how he understood that most of us there had gone through something and that we shouldn't use that as an excuse to waste our lives not being great. I had a realization that moment. For the first time, there was someone that understood, but most importantly, that cared. As I met the other officers there, I seen it. They all cared. They weren't there to hang out with their work buddies. They were there to make a difference. And the longer I stayed, the more I started to care. I grew a passion, and I wanted to take the next step, so I made a deal with Captain Nelson on our last day for our camping trip. He said if I graduated the class, he would help me become an explorer. I finally felt like I had a purpose, a goal, and so I worked towards it, not just there in that program, but outside of it. I stopped doing what I was doing at school and tried to take life more seriously, and it was hard. People I was close with started judging me. I remember one of my old buddies asked me, "Why are you acting like that? Like if you're better than us?" And I told him, "I'm trying to be better." I wanted to make something for myself, and I wanted to be great. I remember one particular day in Pride Platoon. It was halfway through the program, and it was just one of those days. I was tired, and mentally, I felt destroyed. And so, when the end of that meeting came, me and my mom went to Ms. Jeanette, and I told her, "I quit. I couldn't do it anymore." I remember looking over to my mom and seeing that familiar look on her face of disappointment and letdown. I was flooded with emotions, mad, sad, but most importantly, disappointment. Disappointment with myself for making it that far and wanting it to throw away. Sergeant Padilla started talking with me in that moment and managed to get me out of that overwhelming mentality and told me, "Go home, take a cold shower, recharge my battery, and think of how far I've made it." I did that. For that whole week until the next meeting, I thought long and hard, and I believed everything happened for a reason and that my story at Rialto wasn't finished. And so, I went back stronger than ever and graduated as Class Sergeant with the class of seventeen. And here I am today, trying every day to be better and leaving my past behind me. I don't know what the future holds for me, but I do know I won't waste my life on some street corner making poor choices. Pride Platoon isn't just some program that's gonna straighten you up. It's a second chance to leave all that you did in the past and move forward towards a bright future. And if you're not gonna do it for your loved ones or people that care about you, do it for yourself. And so, I'd like to end off thanking all the officers who dedicated their time to this program and making it available to the to the community. And to the officers who's helped me get this far, I just wanna let you guys know, you guys saved my life. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to invite up Yvette Castro. She's the mother of a past graduate, Brittany Hernandez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yvette Castro. I am the mother of Brittany Hernandez, who was in class nineteen. Um, I have to say that this program has saved my daughter from being in the streets, um has opened up my daughter's mind. Um, if it wasn't because of this program, I I truly believe she wouldn't have been been here. Um, she is currently away at Sunburst, and that is thanks to this program, um especially to the officers, to Captain Nelson. There's something that Captain Nelson talked to her when they went out to that, um, was it that? The campy trip. Um, she keeps saying that she wants to be just like him. Um, when she comes back in December from Sunburst, she, her plan is to finish that program, finish high school, and eventually go to the military and come back to Rialto to help out the Rialto PD Department. Um, she did write to me not that long ago. Um, she did put, "I am beyond grateful for you." Um, sorry, I'll delete it. Okay, says, "I'm beyond grateful you put me in Rialto Pride Platoon. They changed my perspective on life for a for a better. Not a day goes by where the officers don't cross my mind. They they had that impact on my life for the rest. I am thankful you supported me on my decision in enrolling Sunburst. This program really saved my daughter, and I have to say thank you for this program to Rialto PD in Rialto."
And last but certainly not least, current Rialto police officer, he's also a field training officer, Dorian Cotto.
Good evening, council. Uh, thank you guys for having me, and I'm actually really appreciative that we changed the video, revamped it, made it more exciting. The old video actually had a picture of me stuck in a tree because I was afraid of heights, so I'm very excited. Thank you, Officer DeShepper, for updating it. So we talk about statistics. We talk about the new generations of officers that have, or people that have gone through this program. Uh, we have the explorer who just recently graduated. I went through the program for the very second session. Um, it was very brand-new, it was very early on, and the commitment from the officers that have been involved in the program throughout the evolution of the program is just without words. Um, how much commitment that the officers put into the program is absolutely amazing. Uh, you can see it in the streets, you can see it through the statistics. I was one of those statist- statistics back in two thousand and ten. I went through the program, not because I wanted to, but it was more of an ultimatum. I went through the program. Luckily, I was able to be successful through the program. I had officers that were willing to take that mentorship role, take that fatherhood role that I didn't have and that I needed. Luckily, they were able to guide me through the program. They were able to guide me through the Explorer program as a junior mentor for the Pride Platoon program and ultimately to become a police officer and be standing here in front of you. you. Otherwise, who knows where I would have been. But thankfully, this program is giving the children and the citizens of our city the opportunity of being better. So, if you guys have the time, we would actually encourage you guys to come out and see what we do, especially on the weekends that we go out for the camping trips. Come and check it out. See what it is that you guys are supporting. But thank you guys for giving me the opportunity of coming up here. Thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to serving the beautiful city of Rialto and continue evolving.
Just in closing, these success stories wouldn't be possible without a motivated and dedicated staff. And the first person I'd like to recognize is Ms. Jeanette Lopez. She's been a part of the program since it started, so basically that's 15 years. She's given 15 years of Saturdays, time away from her own family, to help mentor and teach the youth of our community. So, thank you, Ms. Jeanette. You're the brains of the operation. And last, if I could have all the staff members back there come up here. Everybody wants to see your face. Come on. They're a shy group unless the kids are in front of them and they're yelling at them. So this staff is made up of both sworn and professional staff, and they all have their primary assignments, but they all have also decided to volunteer their Saturdays and be away from their families and teach, coach, and mentor the youth of our community. And this program truly embodies what the Rialto Police Department's all about, and we've been able to fill our ranks with people that truly want to make a difference. And a lot of that is to your credit, Council, for your support. And thank you for supporting this program. Thank you for being at the graduations. Thank you for donating funds to the program. Thank you for speaking to our kids. We are so excited to announce the twentieth session, and our informational meetings will be Wednesday nights, 6:00 PM, at the Johnson Center in Room 505. Thank you.
On behalf of the total council here, we'd like to, first of all, thank Chief Mark Clayne, you know, for having the initiative to meet with you, and Captain Nelson now, to start this Platoon program. And I'd like to thank all of the officers that have participated, all of the staff that have participated. You touched the lives of many individuals in redirecting their lives, and I think that's positive when you look at a city that is growing, that you can change the minds of individuals and encourage them in a positive direction, that their life is worth something and they can become something. And as an example, you showed an officer that went through the program and became an officer, and I'm sure that there's probability of other individuals that would like to become police officers. Those that can go through that kind of a training, I don't know if all of us here on the council can go through that kind of training, but some of us may take you up and go up there on a weekend and look at the training that you're going on. And again, we want to thank you on behalf of the city of Rialto for the Pride Platoon program. It's excellent, and hopefully it will continue to be in existence for years to come. Thank you very much. Next, we'd like to move on to oral communications. Are there any individuals that have signed up to speak?
Yes. Is Melissa here? Melissa Ramirez? Yes, she's come to speak.
And can you please just state your name?
Hello, my name is Melissa Ramirez. Good evening, fellow mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, and the public. I'd like to address a big issue for people in, not only in my generation, but the whole community as well, that is a lack of financial literacy, education, and awareness. I propose a free or affordable financial literacy class be offered every three months at the public library or an adjacent public location accessible to the Rialto community. Many young adults and adults struggle financially, specifically with credit debt and how to pay it off and the like. The free or $10 class can ideally offer various resources that can help them manage their debt and help them build their spending budgets. I ask that you please consider this in a serious and timely manner. This quarterly class is important information that every member of our city can benefit from, including me. It would improve the community's quality of life. Thank you. I take any comments or...
Are there any comments?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next week, we have Lawrence Jenkins.
My name is Lawrence Jenkins. Hello, everybody. Good seeing you again. Quick question, or it could be a comment. I still have an interest in having a park on Valley and Cactus right across the street from Joe Baca Miller School. Evidently, I've done something wrong, so what do I need to do to move that forward? That's all I have to ask.
I believe, I think we need the clarification if it's in the city of Rialto, or if it's in the city of Colton, or if it's in the county of Colton. I think it's across from that area, so it would probably have to come from the county, I believe. It's, I'm not sure, but we'd have to find out if it's in our city, and then we can do an assessment and evaluation in terms of a park in that area.
Great. And just a footnote, the city of Colton owns it. It is in the county, but I'm stuck on making progress. And I know everyone's been busy, but it's still in my heart.
We appreciate that, and we think that's a good idea in terms of a park in that area. I was just talking to, if it's in the city of Colton, but I think Bloomington, it's unincorporated area, so it would probably fall under the jurisdiction of the county. Is that correct, Christina?
Yes.
Okay.
Jessica.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have the consent calendar. Is there any member in the council or that would like to pull any of the items on consent, or is there any member from the community that would like to pull any item from the consent? Seeing none, hearing none, do I hear a motion to accept the consent calendar? Motion's been made by Carla Perez, seconded by Edward Montoya. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, we'll move on to Tap One.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tap One this evening is a presentation from Rialto Water Services Megan Matson, who will be providing you an update on the bio-solids project and a request for authorization.
Greetings, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, staff, and public. This is a final construction work authorization for the bio-solids upgrade project at the Rialto wastewater treatment plant. I was so moved by the Pride Platoon presentation, and that's a hard act to follow with a bio-solids study, but I will do my best. Before I start, I really want to commend the work, service, and attention to this project provided in the water subcommittee by Mayor Baca and Mayor Pro Tem Ed Scott, and the real work and attention of staff, including City Manager Williams. It's been a good, rich, intensive working process for the last few years, and I'm glad to be here presenting the project to the full council First, I wanted to establish that the request for the bio-solids project today is $35.6 million. The wastewater funds confirmed as available for this project are $44 million, and there is an additional $1.8 million that may discount that project cost that staff is looking into now. This approval is urgently required because the pretty severely aged condition of the equipment at the plant is creating operational and regulatory risk. The good news is we're at full design and pricing sufficient to move forward with that equipment orders and implementation. A basic description of the project itself, this is the end of the plant that handles the sludge and dries it down to the driest possible hauling capacity. Some of the equipment is 20 years old, some of it 30, and the operations crew has really been keeping it alive for the last years. With completion of this project anticipated in 2027, the first great piece of progress there will be the reduction of the regulatory and operating failure risk that we are experiencing now, and then monthly cost savings associated with reduced sludge hauling costs, and that's a direct reduction in cost to the city of Rialto is expected. One of the independent reviewing engineers estimated those savings at $500,000 annually, which would be a great benefit to the ratepayers of Rialto. This bio-solids project history is just to highlight that the subcommittee, the council, the operators, we've been aware of this project need over the years and deferring it, and it is ripe at this point. This also highlights the sort of engagement at touchpoints with the council, and then the two independent reviews by outside engineering firms confirming the cost buildups and the necessity of the project. This is the final construction work authorization cost breakdown. There's a guaranteed maximum price from the design-build team. That was a competitively selected team of AECOM Wiles. They have long familiarity with a complex site and have, as I said, guaranteed this price with the only change order risk associated with changes in law or unknown site conditions. Other than that, this is fixed. On top of that, the Veolia Construction Management Services over the years of construction and operations throughout this project's implementation, and then line for insurance, which puts the total requested FAWA approval amount of $35.6 roughly, to highlight, to get to this point of 60% design and the early technical memos that, those funds have already been paid, 1.3, but the total project cost therefore is at the 36.9. This is a summary of outside independent reviews of, one, the necessity of the project, the condition of the materials on site, an evaluation of alternative, possibly more cost-effective options. All of these independent reviews were done by, again, Jacobs Engineering separately, the independent engineer, ARAP, and they confirmed where the project sits today as necessary and reasonably priced to move forward. The last bullet is highlighting a sort of value engineering cost reduction effort that we pursued through five rounds of negotiation to reduce the soft costs associated with the project, down from the 16.22% to now 11.4% plus the insurance. A brief project schedule overview, we're looking at, they'll begin the equipment POs now and be completing design while prepping for construction. The construction period is estimated at 24 months with the testing and commissioning between Q2 '26 and Q2 '27. A highlight in all of that are potential supply chain issues on the equipment, but that will be reflected in the final schedule. And then, an estimated 30 to 40 construction jobs will be created, and as with all projects, on the Rialto Water Services utility front, there's a project-level labor agreement covering this project, and the projects have the support of the local council membership, and the PLA will cover all of this work. So, the proposed council action today is to approve this FAWA and move forward ahead of this August 27 deadline that we have on the guaranteed pricing that is in place. And that concludes the presentation on this project, and we would welcome any questions, and there are representatives in the audience as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions by members of the council? Mayor Pro Tem, Ed Scott? Just a comment. The cost verification, the city of Rialto hired Jacobs Engineering to do that review independently of RWS and Veolia, and the, and RWS hired ARAP to do a similar review independent of the city of Rialto. If you review both verifications, they're very similar and pretty much had the same few issues, so I think we're getting a good price on this project. It's a project that's definitely needed and needs to move forward, and I also want to comment that there is a labor agreement on this project, so it brings good-paying jobs to our community, and we appreciate that very much. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember, got a set it?
Yes, I just want to comment that I'm glad that we're proactively looking at these type of projects and keeping the minds, the citizens in account, and that we move forward with this project.
Thank you.
And I want to move for approval.
Second. Okay, motion's been made, seconded. A question? We can still discuss.
I'm just trying to understand where the $44 million is coming from.
Right. Those are funds confirmed available in a combination of RUA reserves on the wastewater side. It's detailed in the FAWA for the project itself, and we can provide, and those were audited, identified, available reserves.
So, based on my treasurer's report and the one that was just submitted this evening, I show that I have $47 million in the wastewater, but it's broken down in various sub-accounts, and the only thing that's available for wastewater construction that's restricted and unrestricted is about $11 million, and then you have another $7 million in capital charges. Where's the rest of the $44 million coming from? Is it coming from the race civilization? Because I don't understand, I don't think that the concession agreement allows the movement of money from...
Oh, you're correct. The, all of the accounts are locked down to exactly the defined purpose, so the funds available for this project are in a combination of the CIP account and then reserves, not the working cap reserves, none of the sort of security-required reserves, but discretionary.
Right. So, when you say $10 million is coming from reserves, is it from the Rialto Utility Authority monies or from the concession, or the trickle-down accounts or the sub-accounts?
Right. There's, Peter, do you want to address? Peter Lucetti with RWS, we went over it right before. There's 10 on one side, eight on the other. So, it's not coming from city general funds, it's RUA.
Right, or RUA funds, right. But I'm trying to understand the breakdown of this audited $47 million, right? But I'm trying to understand the breakdown of this audited $47 million, right? That some of this money is restricted based on the concession agreement. So my question is, is are we moving money from the stabilization and some of these other subaccounts to make up this $44 million?
We, we have a cash deposit into the concession that was made last year, as you may recall, and, and those funds are part of this allocation. And then there are development impact fees that are part of this allocation that get us close to the $44 million. And then there are audited, as we understand it, reserves in the utility itself, approximately $10 million in reserves that are available for use in construction of a new project. So that's what rounds out the $44 million. It turns out that we don't need $44 million to do this project, we need $35 million to do this project, right? So I think our calculation was that the money that was allocated last year from the general fund plus the diff fees, development impact fees, plus the funds that we need, would take from a portion of the reserves that we understand to be available, round up to the number that we need for the project. But I want to add one other observation, just to make sure we're all being completely transparent and clear. This project is what's being approved tonight, and that's the only thing that's on the agenda tonight. When we were looking at this question, do we have enough reserves to handle immediately, immediate needs, short of looking at the finances of the utility through a separate process that we have going on with a new rate consultant? Because that's not on the topic tonight, but there is, there is a conversation going on about that. We felt that in wastewater, there were four projects that would probably need to be funded before we resolve what we'll call the bigger picture, and we think there's enough funds in place to resolve all four of them. It's rounding up some money, about $600,000 to finish a water line replacement related to a paving project that's quite urgent, and then there were two others.
Sycamore and Ayala.
Sycamore and Ayala, the lift station, and the, and then there's this project. So I, I think we're doing the right planning and discussion, and we have the right level of transparency in play, and I just want to be clear, tonight we're only making a decision about one thing.
Okay.
Although I would say to the council, we, we have, we're doing short-term planning on things that are important, and they'll come, those other things will come back independent of this conversation. And we're also doing long-term planning on things that are important, and I believe the subcommittee and maybe in not-too-distant future, the council will be hearing about those as well. Does that help? Treasurer, does that help resolve your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much. And it did go through the Subcommittee on Waters, so both the Mayor Protem and I heard the, the recommendations during that point, and actually approved this to come before the, the council. The only question I have is that on page three of ours, it's, it says, it is noted that there is potential for reduction of funds needed of 1,835,953 associated with the project, and then it says, staff is currently researching how previously unused funds may be applied to reduce the overall cost. My only question is, hopefully you'll be able to come back and give us an update in terms of when those funds would be available, if any.
Thank you for that.
Other than that, I think that we should move this project, and it did come before the Water Committee.
Thank you, and I, I do appreciate that clarification. This is a not-too-exceed approval request.
Okay, with that, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying. Roll call.
Who's your second? You just have a motion.
Oh, second it was by, it's Scott.
He was the first, I'm the second.
Okay, thank you.
I've called for a roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Carrie Salas.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Mayor Baca.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now we'll move on to tab two.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tab two will be introduced by our Finance Director, Scott Williams, and then we'll turn it over to our auditing firm.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to report and discuss the annual comprehensive financial report, or ACFOR, which is the presentation of the audited financial statements for the city for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. By way of introduction, the annual audit is one of several major activities in the Finance Department, the most recent, of course, being the, the adopted budget, which is the forward-oriented plan, and this is a look backward, and the ACFOR provides a year-end review to fully understand how the organization has performed over the previous fiscal year, and this is, the opinion is given by the contracted firm, LSL, OLP. So the primary focus this evening of our discussion will be the scope of the audit, which discusses the, the services presented by the firm. In other words, what, what is the audit seeking to accomplish, the phases of it, of course, the results, which are an unmodified opinion, which we sometimes shorthand as a clean audit opinion. So that means that the results presented in the financial statements are fair, reasonable, and reliable. There is also the discussion of internal controls and compliance, as well as deficiencies or comments from the auditors that, that we take as feedback for improvement. And then finally, the, the results themselves, which again are reasonable and compliance with accounting principles, and most importantly, no fraud or abuse. So with that, I will turn over the presentation to our contracted firm and our senior manager on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. My name is Barrett Warnock, as mentioned. I'm a senior manager with LSL CPAs. We're the external audit firm that performed this audit. We're grateful to be able to be here with you tonight, we appreciate it, and we'd like to thank the mayor, Mayor Protem, and the council members for having us. As, as, you know, the, the other thing we'd like to also, to just take a moment to say is that, you know, we spent quite a bit of time working on the audit, but your team here internally in the city spends equally as much time. It's a tremendous amount of work done by Ms. Franco and Mr. Williams, and we've worked very closely with them, they're actually very happy that it's done, and they won't be seeing me very much anymore, but we work closely and very grateful for their efforts and their patience with us. The audit is over the city of Rialto, as mentioned, for the, the year ended in June 30, 2024. We, our audit basically is, is broken up into two phases. There's a phase where we spend time information gathering throughout the city to try to identify risks or areas that might be of risk, and then, and then the second phase of our audit is spent kind of addressing those risks and auditing them specifically. The results of the audit, as mentioned by Mr. Williams, are an unmodified opinion. That's really, you know, the bottom line, that's why you have an audit, you want to, you want to get an opinion, and, and very happy to say, an unmodified opinion is the best opinion you can have. It's, it's a good opinion, it's what you want, and, and that means that your statements are fairly stated in all material respects and conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. We, we also, along with that, provide a report regarding internal controls over compliance, and as Mr. Williams mentioned, those are basically recommendations, things that, feedback that can be worked on, and there, there are a couple of comments in there that, that are detailed out for, for your, for your reading, and essentially the other, other items that maybe we would mention to you tonight, if there were any, where if we had any kind of major disagreements with management or significant issues or concerns about the, the administration of certain accounting principles, there were no such items that occurred during the audit. As Mr. Williams mentioned, we also did not discover any cases of fraud or abuse that, that we would know, if we had, we would definitely report that to you here this evening. And I think that's essentially it, but again, we congratulate you on the clean opinion and very grateful again for your efforts. It's a great deal of work. Thank you.
So in, in conclusion, the audited financial statements fairly and accurately represent the financial condition of the city, and the full report is recorded, including the staff report. The audited results also validated our estimates presented to the council a couple of months back at mid-year. And finally, the, the comments, the feedback have already been addressed by the Finance Department, and the current fiscal year and year-end activity are already underway. This deadline has been clearly communicated to staff, as well as incoming firm, with the, the stated goal and the deadline of late this calendar year to, to have audited financials for the council, and we need those to provide the, the mid-year estimates in the first meeting of December. So that, that concludes our report, and both of us are available for any questions as well as staff.
Are there? Move for approval? Motion's been made by Councilmember Andy Caracetis. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Edward Montoya. Discussion, comments?
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, it's Scott.
Just a comment and maybe a question. In the past, when staff reports have been written in the city, they're normally have been signed off by the city manager and by the city attorney for legal purposes, to make sure that the wording is correct, and finance, if there was large amounts of money involved. And I bring this up because of the previous item where the staff report doesn't seem to have any of those things, any of those checks and balances. So I would hope that maybe the auditor would have a discussion with you about whether or not it would be appropriate to have the city manager, the city attorney, yourself as the finance director, and the city treasurer sign off on items that are large amounts of money, where money is coming out of various pots. It's a little embarrassing to me as a city council member to sit up here and have people questioning where money is coming out of, and others don't seem to be able to answer it, and I'm not referring to RWS, I'm referring to our city staff. So I would like to see something put in place where everybody signs off on these staff reports, and that they're accurate, and that everybody knows where the money is coming from, especially the city treasurer. Make sense?
Understood.
Any other comments by any members? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
But Mayor and Councilmember, that is just a report that we just accept and file.
Right.
Just wanted to make sure that was, we're aware of that. Thank you.
The next item is tab three.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council. The item before you tonight requests approval to enter into an agreement with Insight Public Sector in the amount of $110,000, or 110,200, I'll get it out eventually, $110,225 for cybersecurity services. So Insight's Arctic Wolf Security Operations is a cybersecurity platform that provides monitoring to detect and respond to cyber threats. So the city began using Arctic Wolf in 2024, and just last month noticed 220 million proactive observations and data reviews throughout our system, which is a good thing. Arctic Wolf also issued 99 security alerts to protect the city's systems, and 247 suspicious data investigations were opened proactively on the city's behalf last fiscal year, which also included multiple cyber attack attempts. So the contract provides comprehensive cybersecurity coverage, including 24/7/365, monitoring of all of our network servers, computers, and data cloud, or cloud systems. Hiring just one cybersecurity staff member here for the city would average approximately $225,000 a year, and to get that type of coverage, we'd probably need five. So this is significantly more than the total cost of the contract. Arctic Wolf provides access to over 600 security engineers, and the services include up to 300, I'm sorry, not 300, but 3 million in financial assistance in the event of a cyber incident. So this contract is being procured through the Omnia Partners Cooperative Purchasing Program, and funding for this contract is included in IT's fiscal year 25, 26 budget. Thank you, and this concludes my presentation. A representative from the company, as well as myself, are available for any questions.
Are there any questions from members of the council?
There are.
Okay. Mayor Protem, it's Scott.
Again, I don't see any signatures on this agenda item, so has, has, have you confirmed where the money is coming from?
Absolutely. Through IT's budget, it's actually line item 52011, and there's about $2 million in.
And does finance and city treasurer concur with that?
It has gone through finance for approval during the routing system.
Review that has a fiscal impact, by me.
Okay, thank you. Move for approval.
Motion's been made to approve, but there's a question that Andy.
I'll second.
Well, seconded by Carla Perez, if you had a question.
Yes, I do. So you have 600 service engineers, are they from overseas, are they local USA?
I'm going to call on Ted or representative, so the, the team is primarily stationed here in the United States.
Yes.
Yes, in the United States.
All of it? Or do we have some overseas?
That is correct, all of it, so.
That's the only question I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Now we'll move on to tab four.
Tab four will be presented by Sean McCurry and our Director of Human Resource. I got stuck there. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Councilmembers. Before you tonight for your consideration of adoption is Resolution Number 8392 approving the Memorandum of Understanding for the Rialto Benefits Association Police Management Bargaining Unit, and Resolution 8393 updating the citywide classification plan to amend the salaries for those classifications within this bargaining group. The MOU is a two-year term from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027, and provides for a cost-of-living adjustment retroactive to July 1, 2025 of 3%. Another 3% COLA increase will occur on July 1, 2026. Also included in the MOU is an increase to the medical cash allowance to keep pace with the increasing costs of medical premiums. An increase of an additional $175 a month will go into effect on December 1 of this year, and a second increase of $150 per month will go into effect on December 1, 2026. Other additional monetary items specific to this MOU includes increases to unit employees' 401A contributions. The first of the two increases will be retroed back to July 1, 2025 of an additional, additional $50 per month, and the second increase of an additional $25 per month will go into effect on July, sorry, July 1, 2026. One other economic item that I'd like to bring to your attention is the AA degree incentive. In this staff report, it was written that those unit employees who currently have an AA degree will no longer receive the incentive. However, what was negotiated upon, and what is written correctly in the MOU, is that those employees, employees hired or promoted on or after July 1, 2025 will, will no longer be eligible for this incentive. The fully burdened cost of this two-year agreement is $661,732. This includes retirement costs and all associated costs tied to salary and benefit increases. With that, that concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions from a member of the council?
There are.
Question by Mayor Protem, it's Scott.
This is Curry. Have you, are these increases accounted for in the upcoming budget?
Yes, they are.
They are, okay. And you have confirmed that there are existing funds in the city available to pay for these?
Yes, I conferred with our finance director.
Thank you, and just finally, a comment, I want to thank you for the great job you did on negotiating this contract, you and the city manager, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
And the hard work that not only you put into it, but the members of the. And the hard work that not only you put into it, but the members of the Rialto Police Benefit Association who negotiated with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
No, move to approve Resolution Number 8392.
Mayor, I have a comment. If that's okay.
That's okay. We can still make the motion in second, then you can discuss.
Thank you.
And Resolution Number 8393.
Do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilmember Andy Calacetis. The motion was made by Carla Perez. Discussion?
Great. So, I think I brought this up before on our classification and compensation plan. Why does it still continue to show that the city clerk and city treasurer are part-time? We are not part-time. When I ran for office, no word did it say that I was a part-time treasurer. And when I took my oath of office, I did not take that oath of office as a part-time treasurer.
I can make that correction. That's not a problem.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and we'll make sure that we do the correction on...
Roll call.
Okay.
Did you say roll call?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember McCary Salas.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
I mean, Montoya.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Scott.
Aye.
Mayor Barker.
Aye.
And the motion of the, motion and the second, that's for the both resolutions, which you indicated. Thank you for indicating the resolutions.
Next, we'll move on to Tab 5.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tab 5 is a request for the city council to make appointments to the Planning Commission, Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Commission, Rialto Utilities Commission, and the Neighborhood Beautification Historical Preservation Commission. If the council will recall, back in February of this year, you adopted ordinance number 16...
Excuse me, I have a point of order for the city attorney.
Sure.
Mr. City Attorney, I'd like to bring something to your attention and ask for an opinion on it. As you probably, mayor may not know, the mayor and I sat on a committee that interviewed a number of individuals. We did not interview everybody because some people, we felt, we didn't need to interview because we knew them. At no time did I share with the mayor any list of candidates that I recommended for positions, even though I was asked for those lists by the city manager. Additionally, I received a list of candidates through the city manager from the mayor, and I also received a list of recommended candidates from Councilmember Montoya, which probably and definitely should have gone to the city manager and then to us. I just want to make sure that there's no issue with any type of a conflict or violation of a Brown Act or anything else, in your opinion, based on receiving those two lists. I have met with Mr. Montoya to discuss commissions, their functions, their duties, and what's going on.
You've received a list both from the mayor and from the, and from Councilmember Montoya.
Correct.
You've had conversations with the mayor about members for the commission, and you've had conversations with Councilmember Montoya. Read the same.
No.
Correct?
No.
You've only had conversations with the mayor.
The mayor and I did interviews. I've never given him any list of recommendations. Montoya and I, Montoya sent me a list, as did the mayor. Montoya and I have not had conversations about recommendations for the commission. We have had conversations about the commissions. I'm happy to abstain tonight on this item, if anybody has an issue with that.
Did you have any discussions with any other council member with regard to Councilmember Montoya's list?
No.
And you didn't share any of your thoughts about people with Councilmember Montoya?
No.
You did have conversations with the mayor, at least with regard to interviewing certain candidates.
Correct.
Did you share those with Councilmember Montoya, or any other council member?
No.
Based on that, it doesn't look like there's been a Brown Act violation. However, I hate to rule from the dais without talking with each individual involved. So, if you wanted to completely avoid a Brown Act, you should recuse yourself.
And I shall do so. Thank you. Before we decide to look at any action here, I personally did not give the list to the Mayor Protem. I gave the list to the city manager. The city manager then distributed that list, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I believe the Mayor Protem stated that in his comments.
And isn't it correct that the council members present here during that time decided to get a subcommittee of the Mayor Protem and I to review the applicants who had submitted for the Plannings Commission, and that we were supposed to come back with a recommendation of the body that we both wanted? And that was the reason why the names were submitted. Mayor Protem, Scott, did not submit the names of any individuals. Is that correct?
He did not submit a list to me. That is correct.
But yet, that was what we were assigned to do, was to review, look at, submit those names, and then let the council decide whether they would accept them or add additional names that they wanted to. Is that correct?
That was the intent of the subcommittee. However, I believe the ordinance and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but does allow for the full council to appoint members to the commissions as well.
But that's what we're supposed to do. That's what they would have done at the end. If we were supposed to come back with the names of the individuals that we both agreed or disagreed, and then the council then would decide what members they wanted to add or accept the recommendations that the subcommittees were going to submit. And let me just go through chronically. First of all, it would be unfair for this city council here, I believe, it would be unfair for them to make a decision on any of the individuals for the planning commission when they do not have the documents in front of them. Normally, when we get something, the city manager should have provided the backup material. So, this way, the council members could have looked at, knowing what the qualifications of the individuals that applied. Now, they don't know the qualifications of the individual, other than us members of the subcommittee that did get it and were the ones that looked at it. And in it, it had the members who were on it previously. It also had who was in attendance, who was not in attendance, who was absent during that period of time for us to consider. So, for this body today to make that kind of a decision is really unfair to you. It's fair to me because I reviewed them, but, and to Councilmember Scott, but he didn't submit any names. So, when I looked at it, you know, first of all, I felt that the city manager should have put, included some back information so this way, we can honestly make a decision. I know some of the people that are here in the audience, I recommended their names, you know? And I still have their names for each of the commissions here for the Planning Commission, Utilities Commission, the Parks, Recreation... I'm going to distribute. Do you want to distribute this for me, clerk? This is the list that I had submitted. But it should have been, I don't know if the Mayor Protem may have been ill and just didn't submit any names, or for whatever reason.
Are any suggestions, are your suggestions?
These are my suggestions, but it's not fair to you
Well, I...
without looking at, at the background of the individuals to make a decision, even though...
We did get applications.
You got the, everyone.
We got every...
I sent the full, all applications to the full city council back in April of this year.
But they didn't have it with this, based on all of the names that came. The list that was given to us for consideration were all of the applicants that applied, with no recommendations as to what individuals would be appointed to any committees other than the committees that they applied. And in some cases, well, there was one person that we interviewed. We had four different interviews. These are copies of the different dates that we had for interviews, where the city manager, myself, and the Mayor Protem sat and interviewed on four different occasions the different individuals to be interviewed for the planning commission positions. And we asked some of the individuals, if they were not selected, would they be interested in serving on another committee? And that's how I based my decision, in turning their names in some of the other positions that were available. I think that, personally, I think that if you want, we could take... Well, there's no real questions, but I don't know if there's a question or objection because one person decided not to vote on this because of possibility of a conflict of interest. But that we should probably postpone this until you have an opportunity to the next meeting. And then, at that point, then make a, all of you then have an opportunity to look at my list. You have an opportunity to look at your own personal list that you want. And we all have an opportunity to make a fair and honest decision of who we want to be on the committee. So, that way, if Mr. Calacetis wants to submit names, he can submit a name, add any other name to this list. The Mayor Protem can, I can, revise it, do another one, and the other one. So, I would like to postpone it if I could get a second to that.
So...
Second.
I'm sorry. If we were to postpone this, would the city attorney be able to have discussions with the council, each one of us individually, to figure out whether or not Mayor Protem Scott would have to recuse himself the next time?
We're, we're starting a new process. So, everybody will be back in play. We will have to preserve the Brown Act. I would suggest, since there has not been a recommendation from the subcommittee, that you're going to have to do this as a committee of the whole, which is the whole council. The mayor has suggested that everybody bring their own list to the meeting. I suggest that you don't share that list with anybody in advance.
Or discuss it with one another.
Or discuss it, because that can create a Brown Act violation. Technically, you can discuss it with one other council member, but the problem we, we just had is that you had, you know, somebody send information to a council member that creates a Brown Act because he'd already, a potential Brown Act violation because he'd already talked to somebody. So, we're going to start over. Everybody look through their list, get out your books again. If you don't have them, ask the city manager for any additional applications that you think you might need. Bring back your list of recommendations for each committee the next time, and then you can go through them. Now, Mayor, you do have the option of interviewing candidates since the council, since only you and the Mayor Protem have interviewed candidates. If the rest of the council feels that they need to interview anybody, I hesitate to recommend you doing that at a regular meeting, but you do have the option of holding a special meeting to conduct interviews on behalf of the whole council. That's entirely up to you. You don't need to do that. You can simply do it based on applications.
It took us four weeks of interviews that we had at different times, right, Tanya? Or city manager, Tanya? Is, we spent four weekends meeting with many of the individuals that are interested in being on the planning commission. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor, is this a motion to continue to the next meeting?
Yeah, to postpone it to the next meeting. And that's in order according to the Robert Rules of Order.
And if I can just request, because we all did receive the initial applications, but, you know, we would like some of the additional information. For example, people who didn't show up for their interviews, or maybe are no longer interested, you know, things of that nature, just to, you know...
Some of the extra notes?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The only thing that, that this, I'd like to share this information. In the book that I happened to go through, I went through the past planning commissions that we had, and this is for our current city manager, because she was not the city manager during that period of time, is that we need to make sure that individuals that will be appointed do attend the, the planning commissions that they have. As I noticed in it, and I didn't want to embarrass anyone, but I went through the committees and Parks and Recreation's Commission. They only met, over the last two years, they only met twice. And we should be looking at having a quorum, because they didn't have a quorum. There was only two official meetings that they had in two years, according to the book that, and the material that was presented to us. And then one individual was absent seven times in 2023, and another individual was absent five times. We need to make sure that people are attending and want to serve on these planning commissions and coming back and making recommendations. So, that's the only thing I wanted to add to it, as I carefully looked at it after all these names appeared on here. With that, that concludes the items on the agenda. So, at this time, we'll move on to, what did I do with my sheet? With reports, we'll start with the city council members. I'll start, who wants to start? Carla Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to welcome back Rialto Unified Students. Yesterday, yesterday was the first day back to school for the entire district. So, I wish them all a happy and safe school year. Also, attended last Tuesday National Night Out. It was a great and very well-attended event. They had their annual Battle of the Badges with, you know, council participating as well. I won't share too much on that. I'll let them share the results on how that turned out. But it was a great event. And then lastly, I'd like to wish my son Aaron a happy belated birthday. His birthday was last Friday. He's an 8808 baby, so not such a baby anymore, but anyhow. I think you all have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call on Edward Montoya, Councilmember Edward Montoya.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've been really busy last couple of weeks. I attended the Rialto Unified School District Unity Summit. The mayor was also there. He gave a little speech.
I gave a big speech.
Yeah, it was, it was about five minutes. I also attended the Junior All-American Football, Rialto Panthers versus our Rialto Police Officers. It was, it was really cool seeing the, the youth having a good time playing our, our Rialto PD. Also, I did attend the National Night Out. I did cook a brisket. I smoked my brisket for 15 hours. And I did not, I did not win, but my brisket was best. Says myself.
I think we're going to hear about that a little later.
I'm sure we're going to hear about it. I also attended the ribbon cutting for the Eisenhower High School, the new learning complex. It was a beautiful construction, very well-attended. It was an awesome, awesome event. I also conducted a ride-along with Rialto PD on a Friday night graveyard shift. And it was really awesome to see some of those guys and gals at work. And their professionalism was so top-notch. And I want to thank Chief Kling for his leadership, because without his leadership, it... because without his leadership, it, it wouldn't have created what, what the officers have been able to show to the community. And it was really awesome to see that. The, the community was so, they're, they're so happy when, when the officers are so professional to them. So I, I think that was a really awesome time. So, thank you, Rialto PD, thank you, Chief Kling, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Uh, council member Andy Calacettis?
Thank you, mayor. I attended the, uh, the, uh, the Rialto Unified School District, the new building. Uh, so, the, there's two new buildings with nineteen classes. And, uh, one of the, uh, really impressive things was their cybersecurity room. So they had like a room about as big as this with like, I don't know, about probably fifty computers. And so, we, well, I say we, because I, they're in my city. So, City Rialto is, uh, my pride and joy. But to see the technologies and to see what we're teaching our kids in terms of cybersecurity and in terms of the future of our jobs that are gonna be out there. So, uh, I'm glad to see that we're upping our cybersecurity here on the city side. But it's also great to see that our kids are actually being taught that. There was also a nursing room. Uh, I mean, everything was just top-notch. They even had an elevator. I graduated from Eisenhower High School, and none of that existed. So, glad to see that there's such a huge improvement. So, uh, a, a, a big shout-out to the, uh, the, the board there. The, the, the entire board has done a fantastic job here in the city of Rialto. And, um, just very proud to be part of this community and to have such a great working partner, which is our, our Unified School District. And, uh, lastly, I know that we've really taken a, 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 a greater step on making sure that the, um, the graffiti, uh, on our freeways is taken care of. And that a lot of the, there's a lot of, um, soliciting signs that are being put up. I feel like the last few weeks, maybe the last month, we've gotten, uh, probably, uh, an excess on every single off-ramp. So, Mr. Sullivan, I've always praised you for the amazing work that the team does. I know that some of the graffiti on the walls are Caltrans, but you have a, a great relationship with those, with the Caltrans group. Um, the other part that I'd like to see us do is with, there's a ton of soliciting signs that come up, and I don't think it's fair that our team has to be out there removing these signs. There's a number on that sign, and that number is asking for our services. So, I would like to see if, mayor, we could come up with, uh, some kind of ordinance where we call that company once and say, hey, you know what? I understand you're selling trucks, but, um, you need to remove all your signs that are in our city that are selling trucks, or, you know, there's gonna be a fine associated with it. So, I'd like to see that we adopt that so that our team, our, uh, public works guys are not going through the entire city, removing all these signs and taking up, uh, our time. So I'd like to see that we do that, so that that can, uh, help us out on that end. And other than that, that's all I got, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's a good suggestion, and hopefully that our city manager will look into that and see what kind of an ordinance can be developed along with their city attorney as well, and make sure that we're in compliance. But thank you. Uh, next, I'll, I'll give my report. Uh, first of all, I want to thank Rialto Unified School District, uh, as the, uh, Andy Calacettis indicated. The partnership that we're developing with Rialto Unified School District has been very positive and inclusive of inviting us to attend a lot of their events. Uh, one that was mentioned by council member Edward Montoya was the Unity Summit, uh, well, it was held at Carter High School. I attended that. Of course, I was a speaker there as well. And it was well-attended by many of the parents, faculty, and students that participated. And I believe that Anna Gonzalez also participated in, uh, part of a workshop that was held there, uh, at the, uh, Unity Summit. So, I want to thank, uh, a shout-out to Rialto Unified School District in having this Unity Summit that's very important in getting our communities, uh, together, because we've got to remember that anything that happens with Rialto Unified School District affects the city of, of, uh, Rialto as well, and us, because it's the parents, uh, that sent their kids to school there. The parents live in our city. Probably a lot of them vote in our city too, as well. Just want to remind some of the individuals that may be running for office. Uh, next, I'd like to, uh, state that, uh, I was also, uh, privileged to, uh, be asked to present a certificate to the world boxing lightweight champion that happens to be a resident of the city of Rialto, uh, from this area. And he's a young man. Uh, hi, his name is, uh, Richard Rafael Sandaval. And he started boxing when he was ten, and he had twenty-eight knockouts. So to be the world champion and to have someone from our city, that's quite an honor for our city to know that we raised someone that came through our ranks and became a world champion. I don't know of any other world champions that we've had in the city of Rialto. Have we ever had any? Anybody know history, like? No? I don't know one, but this is one. Anyway, I happened to go there and presented a certificate in behalf of the city of Rialto, uh, to the gentleman. Uh, next, I attended, like everybody else said, the National Night Out at, uh, Rialto Park. I'd like to thank both the police department, the fire department, and all of the vendors that participated in National Night Out. It was a great event, it was well-attended. There was many individuals from our communities, uh, that were there. Uh, they happened to have a cook-off. Uh, our representative ended up losing. Maybe we gotta find somebody else that can cook, you know?
I say you're next.
No, no.
Can we fire him on the dais?
I usually go to, we go out and eat a lot. But, uh, hopefully we can, i- if not, we can, uh, recruit somebody from outside that can be a designated hitter for us, you know? But, uh, it was well-attended, though, National Night Out. And, and again, you know, I want to thank, uh, everybody that was involved, including the Parks and Recreation, uh, director and its staff and its people that participated too, as well. Uh, next, uh, we did the, uh, as indicated, the ribbon-cutting ceremonies that was held at Eisenhower High with the new learning complex. As Andy Calacettis, uh, indicated, the, the new facilities that not only pro, provided cyber, nursing, but also it had a special, uh, ed's department or class two as well, uh, in that area. And that goes along with what I want to compliment the, the whole, uh, members of the council, uh, that voted in, uh, in, uh, helping Carla and I, uh, with our recommendation that came down to have an all-inclusive playground for kids with disability or autism, uh, as well, that we'll now be having in the city of Rialto. So, that's a plus for us. And last but not least, uh, I get a lot of calls from a lot of parents, individuals, uh, and I, I don't see our Parks and Recreation Director there, but, uh, one of the areas that we need to do that, uh, talking about special needs, uh, we need to be equal in terms of our lighting. Apparently, the lighting at Jerry Eaves Park is, when special, uh, needs kids are utilizing the, the park, the lights are turned off at eight o'clock. Will the other kids get to stay until nine? Uh, we should have it equal. It's, the lights should go off at the same time. So hopefully, uh, city manager, you could talk to our, our Parks and Recreation Director to make sure that our lights are turned off at, at nine o'clock equally for special needs as well. And that's normally on a Friday when they practice, so when the lights go off at eight versus nine.
I want to add, it should be nine-thirty, because they're playing till nine, so then they shut off and they're scrambling, looking for their shoes.
That's a good idea for both.
Nine-thirty.
Yeah, if we can, you know? And, uh, last but not least, I'd also like to ask our city manager to talk to our, our Parks and Recreation Director to look at the possibility of adding, uh, the, uh, splash pads that we need, especially in the heat and the summer that's there, that we need to make sure that we're providing some kind of service, uh, for a lot of our kids, or even adults that want to go and get wet too, as well. Uh, looking at having splash pads at our Parks and Recreation too, as well.
If we get the splash pads, will you jump on there for the ribbon-cutting of those splash pads?
Oh, I definitely will.
Are you sure?
I'm positive.
All right, Rialto.
I was wanting to do the bike.
You heard it.
I was wanting to do the bike ride, but thank God it was postponed, I didn't have to do it.
All right, Rialto, you have heard, the mayor will, uh, jump into the splash pads.
Amen. And that concludes my report. Uh, next, I'd like to move on to members of, uh, of our council. I'd like to start off with Barbara McGee, our city clerk.
Let's report.
Thank you. Uh, next, I'd like to, well, he's out of the room and gone, maybe. Uh, next, I'd like to call on our city manager, Tanya Williams.
No report this evening, thank you, mayor.
Next, I'd like to call on our city attorney, Eric Vail.
Uh, thank you, mayor, no report this evening.
Thank you. Uh, next, I'd like to call on our chief of, uh, police, Mark Klein, that will tell us how they ended up losing to somebody else, but that, that, maybe that's not on his report.
No, I'm in a report. I want to publicly congratulate the fire chief. It is so nice to have a new era of winners at the top of the fire department. So, congratulations, your folks did a fantastic job. And I'm sure that one will come back to bite me, but hey, it is what it is, sir. Uh, also, I do want to compliment council member Montoya, because it's very tasty brisket, sir. So, I don't know, I'm sure with American, I'll do you next year, but we'll see. So, anyway, but thank you so much also for, uh, coming out in the kind words. Uh, I, I do want you all to know that it is a different police department that you requested, and I'm really happy with the performance. Uh, not from just the pride platoon and the dedicated staff that we have, but the professionalism. And like I always say, you know, at times we make mistakes. Uh, but when we make those mistakes, we own them, and we just improve and become better. Uh, so, uh, with that, eight thousand five, uh, eight thousand and fifty-eight calls for service last month in July, uh, for Rialto PD. Five thousand and fifty-four officer-initiated, uh, calls, four hundred and eighty-four arrests, and thirteen, uh, hundred and eleven call, uh, actually reports. Uh, so it's a very busy time, a lot of proactive policing going on, just makes us a lot safer. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, chief. Next, I'd like to call on our acting, uh, fire chief, Jensen.
Thank you, mayor and council. Uh, yes, National Night Out, a great event. I think we were all winners. Uh, the community came out and, uh, supported the event, and we got to meet several of them along the way. So, I think we're all winners. Uh, I also attended the, uh, senior ice cream social last Thursday. Uh, there was about fifty seniors present, um, and it was a great event as well. Um, and as you're probably aware, uh, the earth has been moving quite a bit around us and right here in the city of Rialto, uh, last week with, um, several small earthquakes on the north end of the city. And I just want to remind citizens that there's apps available for, um, earthquake alerts, um, when, uh, we're going to have those. Uh, one of the most popular one is MyShake. Um, and a lot of folks have asked us why they maybe did not get the alert. Um, and there's a couple of reasons why. Um, it's the proximity that they may have been to the epicenter, and the magnitude threshold for an alert is four-point-five.
It was three-point-five, wasn't it?
It was four-point-three. Originally, it was reported as four-point-eight, but so farther away, people were getting alerts, and, uh, we continued to, um, look at and study, uh, the different alerting systems that are out there. So I just want to make sure people know, uh, that they have those apps on their portable devices through the App Store or Google Play, and they should download them. They're very informational, and they actually gather data as well. Um, and that's all I have to report, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, I'd like to call on our, uh, assistant city manager and, uh, public works director. But first of all, I'd like to, first of all, compliment him in an outstanding job he has been doing in, in taking care of our cities. When we look at, at our, at our roads, our sidewalks, uh, in the area, I've heard a lot of positive comments from, uh, members of our communities that our city looks a lot better, it's a lot safer, uh, and it's a lot cleaner. And we need to continue to, to do that. So we need to do a lot of ride-alongs to see what areas need to do, still need to be improved in terms of the potholes that we have, the sidewalks that need to be fixed too, as well. So, I just wanted to compliment Tim Sullivan, uh, who has been doing an excellent job there, and he's also our, our assistant city manager to give a report.
Thank you, mayor. And also tonight, I'm gonna be the Parks and Rec, uh, director as well, so. Uh, I'm gonna go over what's going on in Rialto. And mayor, since you were nominated to barbecue next year.
No, I said I was gonna get a designated hitter.
You might want to go to Grillin'.
Designated hitter.
You might want to go to Grillin' and Chillin' at our, uh, senior barbecue dance. So that's Thursday, August fourteenth, at Grace Vargas Senior Center, from three to six P.M. Uh, August swim lessons registration is a last, uh, two-week session for summer. That's Saturday, August sixteenth, online or in-person. Registration opens at eight A.M. Feeding America Senior Mobile Pantry for Food Distribution, Wednesday, August twentieth, at the Grace Vargas Senior Center, from nine to eleven A.M. And Department of Adult and Aging Services Bus Pass Distribution, Wednesday, August twentieth, also at the Grace Vargas Senior Center. That's from ten to eleven A.M. And the next slide here, we have, uh, save the date. So these are events that are coming up in September. We have Rialto Sports Hall of Fame Ceremony, Saturday, September sixth, at the Carl Johnson Senior, uh, I'm sorry, Carl Johnson Center Gym, five to seven P.M. Pet, uh, the Rialto Pet Palooza and Pollution Prevention Fair. So that's a fun one, make sure you bring out your pets. Come and have a great time. It's always a wonderful event. So that's Saturday, September twentieth, at the city clerk parking lot. From ten A.M. to one P.M. I'm sorry, the Parks and Rec Director was texting me to make sure I was doing a good job. So. And we have Viva La Fiesta, Saturday, September twenty-seventh, at Jerry Eaves Park, from five-thirty to nine-thirty P.M. That's also always a great time, uh, with the family. And Walk Like Mad, Saturday, October fourth, at Joe Sampson Park, beginning at seven A.M. And, Madam City Clerk, I thi, did we, did we change the name a little bit this year for Walk Like Mad? Move Like Mad, I think is, is our slogan this year for that. So, uh, highly encourage all the public, uh, and, and folks to attend these events. It's always a great time. We heard a lot about, uh, National Night Out, so let's continue the fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that concludes your report for both of our yeses.
All, all three, four departments that I have right now, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, Dan.
Mayor, before you go on, actually, I should have reported, but I'm just gonna add on to the, um, the Pet Palooza. Uh, we will be having, uh, I think the first one hundred, uh, Rialto residents would come out to, uh, get their pet vaccinated. So the first one hundred, that's on behalf of, um, Police Department, is helped sponsoring that with the, uh, Health of Rialto. So, and we will have more information about that, but we want to put that out. But you need to be a resident of Rialto, and you are allowed to bring, think, two pets. Two, think two pets, per, per household, but you will see more information about that. But I did want to put that out to the residents, to start getting their little furry friends ready to bring out for the Pet Palooza.
Good, maybe Gabe can put it out on, on cable TV and announce that we're having the, this, and they can get vaccinated.
We will, but I just wanted to, since he mentioned about the Pet Palooza.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-huh.
Uh, next, I'd like to, uh, call on our, uh, what, uh, what list do I have here in front of me? Oh, okay. Uh, our direct, uh, Director of Community Affairs, or Public Affairs, or Community Development, sent, uh, I got these mixed. Christina Taylor. Director of Community Development.
Thank you, mayor. All of the above, it feels like, over the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, well, I mean, everybody, they're missing, so.
Um, just briefly, our Community Development Department, uh, enjoyed having a booth out at National Night Out and visiting with the community and doing a little, uh, building permit scavenger hunt with the kids and whatnot. So it was a good time. Um, and, uh, we, uh, we were glad to have the opportunity to do that. And, um, lastly, our next planning commission meeting will be, um, August twentieth. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, uh, and, uh, thank you very much for the work that you've been doing as the interim director of Community Development. And hopefully that, uh, when we have maybe one of our meetings where we don't have a big agenda, that you can come and give us a report of a lot of the projects that are going on here in the city of Rialto. Because I think members of our communities would like. Because I think members of our communities would like to know some of the positive things that are going on in the city and the new developments that are coming up in the area, and where they're coming up to as well. So when we have a light agenda that we, you might be able to do that, we can spend some time informing our community. Thank you. Next, I'd like to call on Shaima to give us a report. Human, or Director of, well, no, Director of Finance, yeah.
Human Resources.
And Human Resources.
I have nothing to report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call on Scott William, Director of Finance. Thank you. Then, of course, we have an absentee and Director of Utilities, right? We don't have anybody there. That concludes the various departments. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Motion been made by Carla Perez to adjourn, seconded by Edward Montoya. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. Councils adjourn.